This is a recording of the Southwick Public Library Board of Trustees. It is August 9th at 7:02 PM. As noted, we do not have a quorum. And until we do, the board will not be voting on any items. So if somebody wants to. Yeah, they're, and over here might be a better bet because I got cores kind of running everywhere. Okay, so now we do have a quorum. So if everybody wants to go around or call the meeting to order and then we can go around and say names.
Michael.
Tammy.
Cindy Warner.
Ten thousand.
Lynn Blair. I think Kami's got it. Okay. Mike. We have no public comments, so we will skip on to communications. All right. So our new Library of Things items. I know I mentioned we have the metal detector. We got a cornball set. We got a croquet set. The new hot topic item is the ghost hunting kit, which was on the news and we've gotten a lot of calls about. So that is wonderful. I'm also going to be adding, as soon as I have time, a document scanner. And we've got like a movie projector with a big screen to go along with it, too. So that is in the works. Our final summer reading numbers, we had 134 kids sign up. We had 29 teens and we had 44 adults. So I'd say it was pretty successful summer. The summer reading program ended last Friday. They had a full house for the Wingmasters Birds of Prey. And so that worked out great.
The great, the great program.
Oh, did you come to Wingmasters? They always do a really, really good job. Yeah.
You had what, over 40 people?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was, there was quite a few. I wasn't here for it, but I've heard that, that it was a full house.
Some years they hold the auditorium town hall if they've got big birds.
Yeah, that might be, that might be the best bet for next time. They originally intended to do it outside, but it was just so hot outside that they had to move it in.
She does a good job.
She really does. Yeah. Yeah. So I can't remember because I know we didn't meet in July. I don't think in June we had, I didn't mention, we have the panic buttons installed as kind of our ongoing security updates. We have panic buttons at several locations for staff. We are, I am investigating, it's kind of been an ongoing process as I have time, investigating kind of refurbishing the outside sign. Because it's, it's not looking too good. So, and one side doesn't work. So the sign shop in Westfield is going to be coming back with a quote, just so we can get an idea of how much it's going to be. Because they're thinking that they can refurbish it, add some lighting, kind of spruce it up a little bit as opposed to like replacing the whole thing. So once they get back to me with a quote, we can kind of see if it's reasonable, see what we can do. But it would just be nice to have a sign with two working signs. Because every time I'm coming from that way, I see the big empty side as just, we need to fix it. So I'm hoping by next meeting, I'll at least have a quote to share with you guys. Let's see. Oh, we did, we did receive a patron complaint about an item we have. He didn't fill out a resource reaction form or any type of paperwork. Basically, we got a series of DVDs. They're called Craftsy. It's, you know, they have quilting, painting, all kinds of different topics. And, you know, we didn't know when we ordered them, but some of the features are unfortunately hidden behind a paywall. So like, it will say, oh, you need to have Craftsy and a Craftsy membership to access portions of the DVD, which is kind of a bummer. But, um, so instead of kind of getting rid of all of them, we just put a note on the front of the cases that just says, you know, some things you may, you may need to have an account to access. Nobody, they, other ones have gone out. Nobody else has had a complaint. But I just thought I'd mention it, just in case it comes up again.
So it wasn't, it wasn't content. I was afraid it was somehow something to content.
Oh, well, from, from what I understand, the way he described it was, was he took out a cooking one and some of the recipe parts, like the amounts. You needed an account to access to see, which I mean, is kind of, it's the point of the DVD. But, um, you know, as, as opposed to just going through and removing all of them.
Right.
Yeah. Let's see, and they, they are also available through Kupla, too. So they're, you know, they, they are in the library system already. Other libraries own them, too. And I kind of asked around to see what they did. And we ultimately just decided to put a label on the front, just so people are aware. I even went back to the page where we ordered them from, and there's no mention of that in any of the descriptions or anything. So it's kind of disappointing because otherwise they're really good, they're really good DVD ideas. But, so just to mention that. And. Let's see, another quick question for you all. So we have to take our weeded items over to the bindery in Agawam. And I am not sure, because I know we have a conference and travel line in the budget. So when I had our assistant director help me drive some items over, I did have her fill out the town reimbursement form to get reimbursed for gas mileage. And I didn't do it for myself because I'm not sure what the, the kind of practice is for that. I mean, if we're going to be kind of doing it on a frequent basis, it does tend to add up. So I'm just not sure if that's something that can be reimbursed for or not.
Well, in general. If travel was in town, I'm not sure if the town pays for it.
Oh, gotcha.
But if you go out of town, you know, like you go to an MBLC workshop in Springfield or West Springfield or somewhere.
Okay, so maybe.
And I've seen in the past, people fill out the form and they get their 50 or 60 cents a mile or whatever the number is now.
Okay, so maybe it's worth just kind of clarifying with the town if it's, if it's a possibility.
It should be.
Yeah. Because you're not going over there for the bus.
No, no, I'm not. But the way, the way they're reimbursing the mileage, it does come out to be, to be 788 for the trip.
Oh.
Which could tend to add up quickly.
If you're doing it.
If, yeah, we're doing it on a frequent basis. Yeah, yeah. So I mean, if that's something that, you know, you think fits in the conference and travel, I can clarify with, with the town to see if it's technically, since it is out of town, if it's reimbursable.
Yeah, that makes sense, given the price of gas. Gas for a dollar a gallon, you know, like, hey, I spent 50 cents going to.
Right. Okay, all right, I will clarify with them and if, I mean, if they're, if that's how their, their thing works, then, because I wasn't sure if it had to be like a certain distance away or anything like that.
No, I, I just remember in general, within town, they tend not to pay people going out of town.
Gotcha. That covers all of that. Okay, so I have minutes to go around for everybody. And I noticed, I think Cindy, we have you with a Y. So I, I will change, I don't know how many other times, yes, I'll change Cindy to reflect her name correctly.
This is almost like a transcript of it here.
Yeah, I did, I did just confirm with Heather, yeah, that we don't need as much, as much detail with everything.
You don't pay that much.
From me. Any other corrections other than Cindy for me?
Do we want to approve the minutes of June 14th?
Sure. Yes.
Almost.
Cindy says I.
Ten says I.
The first one is going to be for June and then we have July. And then we have our evening statistics, which I'm sorry, printed ridiculously small, but I didn't want us to waste more paper.
Okay, so these are, these are all the same.
Did I get yours? Okay. Yeah, so for June, our summer months are normally higher circulations anyway, but for June, we have 5,133 circs, 30 new cards. July, we had 5,284 circulations, 35 new cards. So overall, two pretty successful summer months. And I think we're starting off August strong as well. Interestingly, our curbside pickups are kind of creeping back up again. Anybody have any questions or comments on any of those? So if there are no comments, I will move on to old business. So we are wrapping up the LSTA grant. That, the funds for that need to be spent by the beginning of October, so end of September, everything needs to be spent down. So we're using the funds for two more programs. We have one coming up next week about discrimination in the job search process. And then the beginning of September, we're having one on salary and benefits negotiations. So like when you're looking for a new job, interviewing, hiring, how you can kind of effectively negotiate those topics, which is something I don't think, you know, many programs cover. So I'm glad to see how it goes.
This is on film.
Yes, yeah, we're going to do both of them virtually. Those, the virtual events have seemed to work much better for these business type of programs. So we're going to kind of continue on that trend. Yeah, so that, that's, that'll be finishing up. So otherwise, I think.
Funds need to be spent by September.
By the end of September, yeah. Yeah, the grant is officially over in October. So with those two final programs, we'll have spent everything down. And then I'll give them a final report, but I think, I think it was a great, because it gave us the study spaces, which are like used all the time, which is fantastic.
Because it paid for all the partitions and the tables.
Yeah, I think we matched a portion from our state aid, but most of it came from the grant. So, yeah, so the grant was the study spaces. We did get some items for the business collection and then just a whole host of programs throughout the past year. Which have gone over very well. So also in old business, we're still working on the strategic plan. Thank you to everybody who volunteered. As of right now, I've got one of the members of the friends, I've got a couple representatives from the schools who are interested. We've got a couple patrons on board, hoping once school starts, we can kind of corral a couple of teams to get involved, so we can get their perspective, too. But otherwise, I think we have between 12 and 15 people who are interested in working on the committee. So our first, we'll hold our first meeting in September. I'm hoping to get somebody from MLS, the Massachusetts Library System, to facilitate. We're just trying to figure out a date that kind of works for her. So they'll meet in September and then start planning from there. I'm hoping to do a survey in October. One more meeting the beginning of November before the holidays and everything. And then one final meeting, like after the start of the new year, so we don't get involved in any of the holiday chaos. And that's, that's kind of what it's looking like for now. I'm just still trying to firm up some of the details, but otherwise it's going good. For new business, we were awarded the Sarah Gillette Services for the Elderly Inc. Grant. So they gave us $170 and we use that to purchase reading devices for the Library of Things. So.
Does the magnifier?
Yes, yeah, that, that's the word I was looking for. Been a long day, yes, so the magnifiers. So we have several different types of magnifiers, ones that kind of clamp onto the desktop that kind of go up and over. We have some that are really cool, they're like on legs, so you can like put it, it's like a little, almost like a TV tray, but for like a tabletop. So, and then some handheld ones. So we have a bunch of different types of those. We also got the Shirtlift Children's Services Grant for $2,436, which is fantastic. 2,436. So that, when we had applied, that is for children's and teen services. So the children's department asked for stuff for a kid's, like a coding zone. And then the teen department asked for stuff for a teen tech cafe. So we are in the process of getting all the materials ordered.
What is the team?
So we're getting, she's getting new seating for the teen area. And then I believe it's, I believe it's either a laptop or a computer or laptop or an iPad. I think it's an iPad. And some different technology stuff to kind of widen up the teen space a little bit. And the kids are just kind of getting different coding activities. And also some kind of seating to, to make it kind of an engaging space. So hopefully that stuff will start to trickle in soon and we can get everything ready to go. Okay, and I already did the outside sign update. So that's where we stand with that, hoping to get a quote by the next couple of weeks, so we have an idea of how much it's going to cost to, to update it. The next thing. Oh, the outside sign. Yeah, it needs to be done. So I'm, and I have no idea what kind of. I am not good with that kind of stuff. I have no idea what kind of quote we're going to get. So we'll just have to see what they say and maybe kind of pare down our requests or maybe it will be feasible. So we'll just kind of see when it comes in and I'll let you guys know.
One side doesn't light up at all.
One side doesn't work, yeah, one side doesn't work at all. The lighting does need to be updated. And, you know, I think they, they even said they would be able to kind of paint it because the outside is kind of. Yeah, the outside is, it, it's, it just, it doesn't look nice. So they were thinking like, you know, if we kind of painted like a nice dark green color or something, just to kind of truce it up a little bit. My next question is the assistant director job description. If she is going to be coming in and taking minutes for us, I don't know if you guys want to update her job description to include that as part of the assistant director duties.
Are there other things on that job description that need updating?
There, there are probably other things that need updating as well. Yeah, so before I kind of jumped into that, I wanted to ask and see, you know, start as a base point, you know, do we want to include this in her job description? Because every time we update a job description, it has to go for you guys, has to go through the town. So it is kind of. Yeah.
Other stuff.
Yeah, there, I, I don't think it's been updated since, I think they updated it when Jackie was hired, which was 2018, 2019 or so. So it probably could do with some updating. So if we want to do that, I can kind of sit down and spend some time with that. But do we want to include the minutes as part of, I mean, I think if it's a monthly thing, then.
As, as long as you've got something else to do, otherwise.
Otherwise.
You know, sending it to town hall, send it to the lawyers and that stuff. If you don't want to do it for one sentence or three or four words.
Now, can I ask the question? Her staying for this meeting to take minutes. Does that change her hours?
It does, yes. So normally on a Tuesday, when she'd work nine to five, we switch it, so she comes in noon to eight, so she can stay for the meeting. So the hours are the same, it's just shifted to a different time of day.
I mean, do we really need her to take minutes or can we all take turns taking minutes?
Well, over the years, there's been some flack from some people saying like, I've done it for two meetings or I've done it for the last 14 months. I don't want to do it again, kind of thing. And if, and to a certain extent, it's hard to participate fully in a meeting.
Right.
Or to read material or whatever over and taking minutes.
But we're also recording the sessions.
Right.
So does the person really physically have to be here? I, I don't know, I don't want to mess with somebody's personal life, if they, you know, if their hours have to be changed.
Yeah, no, she, she was, yeah, she was totally fine with the hours changed, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about that. She was, she was completely fine with that. I mean, if, if you, if you wanted to, we could potentially have somebody transcribe afterwards. I don't think it's a requirement that they have to physically be present.
No.
But, so I mean, that, that is potentially an option.
But do people have the free time to do that? I mean, that's the challenge right now.
Yeah, but if you're shifting that person's hours anyways, then you're, you know, taking time away from the morning, you know, it's just.
See, anyone other than the assistant director, our frontline employees, where we don't really have.
Oh, no, 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 I, I understand that, I just, yeah. You're fine with that, so there's three of us that would potentially rotate. I could even bring in my laptop if, if it's your turn and you want to.
If somebody forgets, we always have spare laptops, too. What's not there?
Yeah, I don't think you need to change somebody's job description, maybe change their hours one day a month. We could try it, right? And then if it gets too cumbersome, we could vote again.
Yeah, yeah, she did it last month and she was fine with it. So I mean, it's really what, what you guys decide. I mean, if there's, if there's three people that are kind of willing to do it, then.
Yeah, I think we'll just, we'll just keep that on us and not have to change someone's life or answer one day a month, right?
Okay, so I will cross that off. And then the last thing I had on here was.
If there's other things that need to get changed, though, should we still look at the job description?
I mean, we can, yeah, it might be a good idea to do so because a lot of things have changed since our previous assistant director was here. So it might not be a bad idea to do so. Unfortunately, with our, with our, with our staff shortages and everything, it may not be something I get to till like September or October. But I mean, we also, there, there is, we also have to, I think our part-time children's position hasn't been updated in quite a while, too. So there's, there's at least two of them that could kind of do with a good update. So.
So probably after errors and after people.
Yes, yeah.
Back in position, as you say, over the next few months.
So maybe like early mid fall is a good time to kind of take a look at things. I can do that. All right. And then the last thing I have was, as promised, an update on our emergency planning and training. So Lieutenant Banish did get back to us about, well, first I should say that I took Jen's advice and I wrote to the schools to just see if we could kind of get in on any planning because we are on their campus. So I did speak with the assistant to the principal, and she was saying she was going to meet with the school resource officer sometime late July, early August, and she'd get back in touch with us. I haven't heard anything, and I think that's because Lieutenant Banish and basically what they're saying is that they've gone through the Town of Southwick emergency guidelines, and they've also looked at our emergency procedures. And the town, the Southwick Town Hall grounds safety and emergency guidelines were implemented in 2013, and they've gone 10 years without being updated. So. And ours is currently in draft form. So what it comes down to is, you know, they, they said here that they are not qualified in the matter of drafting emergency response procedures or training town personnel in carrying out said procedures. Since doing so would potentially expose the individual officers and the department and town to liability. So they recommend that the town works with an expert in the field or seeks input from the MIIA, which I cannot remember.
It's their insurance.
Yes, yeah, I'm trying to remember what the acronym stands for, to review and develop the guidelines on best practices.
Can you repeat that one time?
Yep.
They recommend the town works with.
Yeah, they work with an expert in the field or, yeah, like Mike said, MIIA, which is, is the town's, their, their insurance kind of.
Yeah, it's some kind of entity that a lot of the towns get their insurance through. And if they do certain things, they get, oh, here's $300 rebate of premiums because you've done XYZ.
Yeah, so they're, they're, yeah, so what they, what they're recommending is that there's one plan that encompasses all town buildings, so that it doesn't confuse employees and first responders.
But that's from 2010.
Yes, well, they're, they're saying that that one needs update, well, 2013, but they're saying that one needs updating, so.
Nothing before its time.
Yeah, yeah, and lastly, they did say that in terms of training for active shooters, they've reached out to the Mass State Police Unit, which does that type of training. And, you know, they're, they're not confident that anything will happen before the end of summer. And so on. So basically, basically to kind of sum it all up, the town's plan is outdated. We, I mean, I'm sure we're, we're included as a town building, but it's not specific to our setup or structure or anything like that. So.
Did they, did anybody even give you a copy of what?
Yeah, I got it, I got it from Charlie Dunlap. So he gave me a copy of that. So, and what I did was I kind of took a lot of that and put it into our draft form, which I think is unfortunately just going to be off the table. And, and so it sounds like what they're doing is they're just going to want one large encompassing plan for all the town buildings.
In a perfect world, that would make sense.
Yeah.
A police officer or an EMT or whatever would know what is it we do or what's our procedure.
Yeah, so there's kind of a standard practice across the board.
But that assumes all the employees have a copy and would know what it is.
So, yeah, yeah, it's not the training aspect I'm concerned about, it's the fact that our building is so different from a lot of other buildings.
You can have like some overlap, but if it tells you where to go, that's not going to.
No.
You can't have one thing that tells you where to go for every building.
Well, Town Hall is different than DPW, different than the Far House, etc.
Yeah, because you can't say, go here, or say here, wherever.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, and I, I understand, you know, the liability aspect, you know, they don't, you know, want to open any officer or the town or any department up to any kind of liability issues. So, I mean, as this, so.
But that seems like that opens you up on the other side. If you say, we're not going to do anything because it will make us liable. If you don't do anything and something happens, then you are still liable. make us liable. If you don't do anything and something happens, then you are still liable, cause you didn't do anything.
Right.
Yeah, so at this point, I'm just, I'm I mean, I, I guess my best bet is just to kind of keep checking in with the town to see if anything's, I mean, this came through July 21st, and I haven't heard anything else after that. So, I mean, I can keep checking in regarding training or anything, but I mean, something, a kind of plan like this is going to take a long time to put together.
Maybe the next time I go to a selectance meeting, too bad to know this was like this meeting last night, cause the newest select is a cop in Westfield.
Yeah, yeah. This is the next month. Oh, boy. Yeah, so I mean, unfortunately, I think, I, I, I don't want to be at a standstill, because this is something that's so important.
Well, and this information's kind of, as the mother of a child, high schools kind of pretty dark, scary, because they obviously don't have a plan for that.
No, the high school has a plan. They're working with the resource officer.
Yeah.
And they have the cameras to go directly to the police station.
Yeah, and I'm sure that the high school has a pretty, or all the schools have a pretty good, good plan. And we're just kind of a different entity that almost gets, you know. But also, we are, we are one of the most open buildings that, you know.
The library being on the campus of all the schools should, should be encompassed.
Yeah, and I, I think that's why I didn't hear back from the assistant that I spoke to, because they kind of spoke to the School Resource Officer, and this was the ultimate decision. So I think that's why we didn't kind of hear back, cause she was gonna loop us in on a meeting or something like that to to fill us in, but I'm unfortunately at a loss, and our employees are concerned. I mean, you know, concerned. And I, I'm not qualified to to provide any assistance or, or training or anything on this. I have guidance to give them.
And it just is more and more things happening around the country.
There are.
And it's not just a New York and LA type thing. It's happening in, you know, Broken Arrow, Nebraska, Oklahoma, Timbuktu. It can happen anywhere.
Happening every day.
Yeah.
Somewhere.
And no offense, I would say that there's probably a high level of guns in this community.
There's access to them, yes.
I agree with you.
Yeah. So I mean, I'm not, yeah.
That's why we had two police officers at a selectance meeting last summer, when we were getting 100 or 150 people coming to a meeting, two uniformed cops in their own, cause it feels nice. She, they'll never come unless they're handing them a certificate or promotion. But then it dawned on me.
Yeah, attention to the whole country or-
Are there any rooms in the libraries that can be easily secured?
Well, and see that, that's why I need professional advice, because, I mean, we could secure this room, but there's a glass wall. There's a glass wall, there's a row of windows. In an emergency, would it suffice? Maybe, but there's a glass wall, the kids' room, there's glass windows.
I'm thinking the kitchen.
Oh, the kitchen, I thought you said the kids' room. Yes, yeah, the, the kitchen potentially, still windows. I mean, you know, with the way it's set up, you know, somebody can see you in every corner of that from a window, most likely.
From an outside window. But if there was something happening in the library itself, that's a place where employees could go and shut a door and lock the door.
And lock the door. There is still a window on the door, yeah.
Can, can you lock the door at the top of the stairs?
At the basement?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have to keep that locked. So that one locks, yes. So the basement is
And you do have another way out of the basement?
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's a back way out, yeah. And that's just why I need professional advice, because I mean, they know how to look at this space and say, what's the most effective, logical thing to do? I mean, I don't want to see-
School classrooms also have windows on the doors, and we just keep something that can be easily shaded over.
Yeah, we have, our staff room has a, I mean, it's essentially just wrapping paper, but it covers the window.
It's beautiful, mine is chart paper.
Yeah, it covers the window. So, I mean, it might not be a bad idea to put on the backs of our children's windows, cause those are always open anyway, so if we gotta kind of shut them it up.
Really quickly.
Yeah.
So do that, and then do the kitchen window, and then, like, you say, like, listen, we know that there's a plan that's being worked on. It's not anything immediate, but in the interim, in an emergency, go to these two places, shut the door, do not open the door for anyone to go, please.
I guess in the meantime, I'll, you know, cover the windows, obviously, but um-
We don't keep them covered all the time. We just have it there, like, ready to be flipped over.
Well, I'm just thinking, cause they're always propped open, so that if it's on there anyway, and we just close. Yeah. And I'll just keep checking in about the status of of any type of plan or training and-
I think you gotta be squeaky.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And I, and I have been, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm riding that, that bridge of being almost too squeaky. And I don't, you know, I, I want to keep our relationships positive. But at the same time, you know, my stuff is here.
It's a good, it's a good project, this officer who's on this left foot.
Well, there you go. Next time you go to the meeting, I mean, it might not be a bad, I mean, if there's a way to kind of, you know, at least
Oops, sorry, you said you're gonna cover the windows, the children's room?
Yeah, the kitchen's already covered.
And can be locked. I'm sorry. Another clear part of that too is if you can find the corner where they have the least physical access. So like, if you aren't here, right, you go into there, cause there's no way you can see from there.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, but stick out in the kitchen, the children's room too, which is gonna be the least visible corner. Just feel like now we know where to go.
I mean, my concern is, am I even qualified to say that? You know, I just, that's why I just, I would love somebody to come in and just, that's the whole part of the idea of the plan, was to have somebody come in and look. Because I, I I don't want to be responsible for making the wrong decision. I want somebody to come in and-
You're not a policeman, you're not a fireman, you know.
No one will hold you liable.
Yeah, you may have a first aid kit, so you can offer a bandage, but you're not gonna-
But wait, can you, can you contact the state police and say, listen, this is what we've put together? Can you come and see if this is appropriate?
I mean, is that stepping on the toes of the town?
I'm not sure.
I mean, getting phone calls from this crazy librarian out himself. I, I, I'm so scared. I don't want to step on anybody's toes. Because I just, I, I also, I want to keep things moving, but I also, I just want to keep the relationships positive, you know what I mean? Without, you know, I don't want to step on, because I know that, I know the town is working with the state police, so I don't want to kind of
interfere.
Interfere almost and, and become that person that, you know, goes over the heads of people, because then I feel like that makes relationships not positive, and then things really don't get done.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to talk to the swap.
Yeah, start with that. I might just check in with Carl, the town administrator, and just say, hey, you know, I know this was discussed, cause Carl was moved in on this email too. So if he has an, at least an estimation of-
Well, I mean, just, just for her employees' peace of mind, to have somebody come over and say, look, we don't have a formalized plan. You know, it's, it's in process or whatever, but in the meantime, we suggest-
Here's some recommendations, you know?
Yeah, but I mean, it sounds like from this that they're kind of not even wanting to get involved with that at all. I mean, I, I can put the idea out there and just say, hey, in the meantime, come over, take a look at things, give us some suggestions. Because I think a plan of this magnitude is probably gonna take a very long time.
It's just in the past, the fire department, for example, has come in and did their inspections, and they look at the fire extinguishers and say, this one hasn't been refilled in three years or five years. I think they were the ones who said you had to keep that door unlocked, so that people could get to the exit. So the fire department is, has been open to doing that kind of stuff, you know, stuff that's within their approach.
So I guess we, I guess we make, you know, Mike, if you can find a way to, to get it, you know, and I'll, I'll check in with Carl to see if there's anything in the works. And I can potentially just reach out to Lieutenant Banish again and just see if there's anything, you know, that we can do in the meantime, while it's being worked on, so that our staff feel a little more secure. And then come next month, we'll see if we've gotten anywhere with any of those things.
Right. It's not terrible that we have to get close to this.
Well, the, the good news is, is that's the last thing that I have on my agenda, so so our next meeting would be, what is this, second September 13th? And if nobody has any other comments or questions or anything to add, I suppose we can, somebody can make a motion to adjourn.
We will make a motion to adjourn.
Jen's second.
Almost in favor, Michael.
Yes.
Jen's.
Cindy's.
Jen's.